Ladies and gentlemen, members of the city council, please attend the call meeting of the city council to be held in the sixth floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 5:00 PM, Tuesday, May 27, 2014, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go into closed meeting by order of the mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Evans? Mr. Meeks?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Simmons?
Here.
Ms. Randall? Mayor Wright?
Here.
Mr. Rowe?
Thank you, Deborah. The one and only thing that's scheduled is budget discussion. And we'll give you time to discuss the budget because it's on your agenda tonight for adoption. Having said that, I know that the Commonwealth's Attorney has contacted several of you, if not all of you, about the possibility, the need for another attorney. When we met with the Commonwealth's Attorney as part of the budget process, at that point, he was telling us that his caseload was down and that he wasn't the type of person who would ask for something he didn't need. So apparently, it spiked back up. This is what I recommend that you do with constitutional officers, because the state has not adopted its budget, that you just keep the numbers that are in this budget. Let's see what's going to happen with the state budget. You may have gotten a memo from the D M L that says that Rick Brown, who's the Secretary of Finance, reported to the money committees last week that the state is down on revenues. So a couple of things. One is that their forecast is that revenues are going to be down. Two, they can't go into the rainy day fund until the budget's adopted. And three, the budget's not adopted. So with all that mystery, I recommend that what you do is just keep the numbers that are in the budget. Need to come back and make an adjustment, one way or the other. We can do that after the adoption of this budget, and that would probably be in July. So having said that, we'll give you time to work out where you are on the budget.
Well, yes, Elizabeth.
Just, I've asked you this before, but I'd like to ask it again publicly, be sure I understand. I think most of us at the table want to keep the mounted patrol in existence. Is there anything that we need to do to amend something to do that?
It's $60,000 rounded up. We would have to reprioritize the police department's budget or bump up their budget by $60,000.
We need to do that. I feel, my opinion. I don't know if we have a consensus, but I think a mounted patrol is, almost falls in a few categories, normally, I guess, can be crime prevention, but also tourism. We've also heard that it's probably almost a mentoring tool. We had a gentleman drive in from Tappahannock, which is about 100 miles from here, just to present a case that impacted his life, actually. So speaking for me, I think we need to keep the mounted patrol.
Where are we at budget-wise? How much are we talking about saving if we disbanded it?
Round it up, $60,000.
$60,000?
Right.
And so you've got the stable and all of the other things. Those costs is what we're saving. You're going to reassign the person to do something else, so...
That's correct. It's a tactical assignment, and that's why I was talking with a person yesterday at the parade about just this very issue. It's a question of how you tactically, that's what we're talking about, deploy the forces. And if it's the consent of council that you want to keep the mounted patrol, then we, two things, either we need to add $60,000 to the police department budget, or we will reprioritize the budget, the existing budget that I've recommended, in a way that keeps the patrol.
I think we ought to be able to reprioritize that budget without adding it in there. I mean, you got, I think, what is it, $32 million is that budget for that department? Is it 32 million, my police department, 32, 33 million?
The easy thing to do is to reprioritize.
Yeah. Only $6,000, not a lot of money. Yeah.
I think we have a consensus to keep that.
Did you have a item, yours?
Well, what I was going to do, and I'm sorry, I've got a lifesaver in my mouth here, but on the Commonwealth Attorney's request, I hear what we say, we can come back and do it, but, I mean, if it's in there, isn't it easier to implement it if it's already in the budget and he needs it? And knowing Earl, he's not going to certainly use it if he doesn't need it, so it's there for him. And if he doesn't spend it, well, it hasn't been spent.
I think you can make that adjustment when it happens, because first of all, the state has got to pass a budget, and then we've got to know what that slot's going to be and how much they're going to allocate and what our piece is going to be, unless you just want to... I wouldn't just set a false number out there and say, hey, whenever they fix it and do their thing here that is the use. I think we can modify it just as easy, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. I agree with you, Mayor. I think we can do it that way, because, because who knows? Who knows? Some money might fall out. The state might have extra money in that line, you know, when they pass the budget. We don't know yet.
I don't think anybody's against that.
Yeah, we just want...
You just need the state budget.
Exactly. We don't know what the state's going to do in the way of salaries.
And I like to keep our budgets as clean as we can, you know, for now, and then we adjust it as we need to. But we're starting to play with it right now, and...
I hear you.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm okay.
Okay.
Anybody else? I guess, okay.
Mr. Meeks?
Yep. This is a sheet I was given. I was talking about. There you go.
Thank you.
This is what the school board's asked for. The must fund, they're asking for 5.9 million. You know, they're, that's what I'm recommending, is 5,947,62. This is our must fund. Talked to Mr. Bridgeford and Mr. Steele about self-insurance. They feel that their board has, they're feeling a little different about self-insurance. They feel like they can go to their board after they get all their numbers and probably self-insure and save some money. So 2.3 might be a savings, but right now, this is what they're asking, if they continue with the insurance they have. The retirement piece for the hybrid, they took the lower rate. I guess he, it's the two rates, you can go for higher one or a low one. They took the lower rate. On the back sheet, they did, they would like more on the technology line item. They increased about 400,000, 450,000. And it gives you kind of a breakdown of what they're looking for. But they definitely would like the 5.9 million would be the bank analytical. They said they're working on it. That's probably going to come in a little lower. And the liability insurance they're negotiating, that could also be lower, but they don't mind showing us what the lower number is, so... And talking to them, you know, I think going forward, I think it's going to be easier, a better relationship far as being transparent and accountable. And really, the only way to even attempt it is go forward. Plus, they've got to find a superintendent. They've got to hire a superintendent under a different superintendent's budget. What they're saying is you've got to bring a new superintendent. His views or vision might be different, and they just want to make sure enough money's there.
So the 5.94 number here is for the must fund items. This second sheet here for the technology piece here, the IT?
The 649 is already in, right there. They would like additional 454,000, but they can get by with the 59.
Which sheet's the 5.9 on?
Right here.
So we went from, so last, two weeks ago was 5.2. And now, and then what you said, Mayor? 5.2?
Yeah, I was using round numbers, and he was using a $6 million figure, because again, I've chatted with each one of them and not got down to the actual numbers. And we asked them to go get the exact, precise breakdown and bring back to us, which he has now, and it is more in line with the 6 million.
Now, these vacancy position eliminations, or those positions that were previously funded but unfilled?
This would be the total general fund, the 46 million, so they...
71?
Vacancy positions elimination?
No, I think they're, I think this is them, again, continuing build to, they have in the past not filled a lot of those vacancies to make sure that they stay within what they were trying to do to make budget. And so over the last four or five years, they've got several hundred positions that they have not filled.
So...
So I think they're showing here, again, a savings of not filling those positions.
Okay, so they're eliminating those positions, so they'll no longer be funded but unfilled?
Right.
And most of those were due to retirements and people who transferred or went into other areas. That is used as a customary procedure.
And so on your second, the information technology sheet here, the 649 is already in, and the bottom half here, the additional pieces for 554...
454.
I'm sorry, 454. And that gives it a total of six...
And now you're 6.390.
About 6.4 million.
Right.
Now, this student computer replacement, so if they don't have a match for that, they lose the state grant of 2,580,000.
Yeah, most of these, these types of grants, if you don't have the local match, you won't get the state piece.
Yeah.
And so that's just money not being taken advantage of if they don't have the local piece here. So 6.4 million would be able to give them everything that they're asking.
Right.
What they will need to operate the schools.
Until we work close with them on the categorized budgeting and transparency, I think you need to give it to them so we can actually see what their actual budget would be for the next fiscal year.
Oh, I agree. I mean, I've spoken to every one of their board members about this new process and how we're going forward, and they're all in agreement with the quarterly meetings and making sure that we get this thing right sized the way they want it. They just don't want to go into this thing handcuffed.
And I also talked to Mr. Steele about adding a new column to the budget.
A contingency?
Contingency budget, for them to come back to us if we do decide to give them this money, that it can't be spent until they come back and tell us they need it.
And that'll be something new, too, with the quarterly...
Well, the thing, the thing I want to make sure, that next budget season, I don't want somebody threatening to do away with the STEM program, so I want somehow money in that put in earmarked for the categories, for those programs, where some administrator, whether it be the new superintendent or somebody, say, well, if we don't get this, we're going to cut those programs. So I want, I don't know what we can do legally, George, but we need to protect those programs with this additional money that we're talking about.
I'll get you in a minute. I think, given going through this next year, working together and being able to fine-tune these categories and seeing how all this flush out is going to help get us there, so we'll know exactly what items and what categories they want to put those funds in, and I think that's to Mr. Meeks's point as well, correct?
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Cherry?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah. I was looking bound for them, but as Mark Aduka Trustee has said, they don't have, they don't have a contingency fund. We are the contingency. So I'm never going to support them having an extra fund to stack, to put money in. Okay? So that's not the way to do this, and that's what our fund balance is for the city of Portsmouth. We, I suggest we make a separate appropriation outside of, outside of the budget. We leave our budget intact, make a separate appropriation, we list the funds that this is going to cover, and we do it that way with the same effective date as our budget of July the 1st. Because we don't want to be going into this budget, tearing it up. As long as they get the money on July the 1st, it's all the same, it should be all the same to them, no matter how we fund it. It's going to come from the same source.
Explain that again.
We do, we do a separate ordinance for this money, just like we did, just like we did last, two weeks ago, for the 2.1 million dollars. We pass out, we got the budget that the manager's presenting, if we all vote on that, we vote on this as a separate item. It's the 6.4 million dollars, that's what it's going to be. And it all has the effective date of July the 1st. They still get the money, and we know it's going to, and to build the point for those programs, we list those programs in there, and we want to make sure, we want to ensure these programs are funded.
Let me defer to the manager and the CFO. What is the best way to do this? Does it matter either way if we increase the existing budget by 6.4, or we do a separate ordinance for the 6.4? Or does it even matter?
It depends on how you treat this appropriation. If you're looking at it as a one-time appropriation, then the best way to do it is what page is recommending. If you're building it into the regular budget, then it doesn't make any difference. It gets built in, and their budget will come to you next year with this 6.4 already in the budget.
And I think because the...
But I thought your question would be, how's the best way to fund it? I need to tell you again, whatever number you decide on, that's fine, but you've got to have a funding mechanism that makes sense. And what makes sense is tied to a revenue source.
Thank you, Governor.
Particularly if this becomes a reoccurring expense. So in other words, your budget, your budget is balanced right now. You either have to cut some other expenditure or raise taxes. It's not smart to use fund balance. And I sent you a memorandum that our financial advisor sent us today. As you know, we talk with our financial advisor to keep them up to date through the budget process and through the year. They, like me, recommend that you don't use fund balance, because it's going to have a negative consequence on our credit worthiness as viewed by our bond rating agencies. And if you don't read anything, just read Kyle's memo, and I recommend that you take a moment to read that. I hope that answer made sense, did it?
Okay. Mr. Cherry? All right. I thought you didn't see him, that's all.
Doc Edmonds?
I think what the manager has said is very relevant, but also think what Vice Mayor has said, it makes sense to do it that way.
Sure, I agree.
That's true.
It sounds like it to me.
Yes, Mayor?
I'd just like to make it clear, one of the things that we would mean to make sure, that as we are communicating with those, those of us who have the, and been working all the way through with these school board members, that we're all on the same sheet and that we do not give the apparent appearance that we are not together on what it is that we are proposing for them. We have been through many school budgets and funding in our city, and we've been most successful with it. And I would hope that we continue the continuity of openness in our discussions as we work through with one another, and to make sure we're on the same sheet. And Mr. Moody, that's very crucial. We've been through this bad, so we know what we're talking about.
Mr. Moody?
Well, you know, doing it that way, and I support the Vice Mayor and the Bishop, I think we should do it separately. With that said, that is unorthodox, and if it becomes reoccurring, as this memo states, it's not without its risk.
That's right.
So with that said, this has really been an unorthodox year fiscal-wise for the schools, for a lot of reasons that I won't revisit. But I think, I think we need to do this. I think not doing it puts a cloud over whomever the new superintendent is, and we've just heard so many stories and examples from teachers and students alike, that there are a lot of needs out there that apparently, for whatever reason, weren't addressed in the previous budget. So we need to, we need to begin anew and see if we can get this thing on the proper fiscal ground.
I agree. But the... Yes, Mayor?
Under the heading of no surprises, I will vote against this, and I will explain why later, but I just think this is the wrong approach.
Okay.
And I don't like you going into the fund balance, and I don't want to raise taxes.
Okay.
To me, this is no different than a request for a similar amount of money this time last year that was a surprise to a recital. It's the same kind of situation, so I will not vote against it.
I don't disagree, but this is unusual circumstance.
That's right.
And kid, a lot of kids are dependent on this, and teachers.
And the other piece is that the potentials that lie within the insurance piece and some of the other things here, I think by the end of this year, this fiscal year, it'll flush out, and we'll find out just how much of that we do need to put into the budget to make it a reoccurring event. But at the same time, there could be areas and other categories that we are able to take from that may wash this piece out. So I think we take the money and we allocate the funding out of the fund balances. Is that what you recommend, Mr. Meeks? Out of the fund balance to fund this event this time around, so we'll have a year to be able to see how this whole thing plays out, and that way, we don't have to raise taxes, and we can do a separate appropriation or separate ordinance to be able to do that, whichever is, whichever is more fluent. I mean, I'm okay with. I think tying them to a category, when they, what they did with the potential programs that will be cut is because of the must fund items. So you can either say, we're going to dedicate the 6.4 million to the must funds, or take the 6.4 and subtract out the 1.1 here for the technology, and put that 1.1 in technology and put the balance of it in the must fund categories. I think the contingency piece that you were referring to is a lot cleaner, instead of trying to slide it all in those boxes, just leave it in a contingency fund, and they'll come back to us when they need to tap into that fund to do that. And I don't see that, Vice Mayor, as a, as a rainy day fund or slush fund. I think...
What do you think contingency means, Mayor?
I think we can set this up...
What do you think contingency means?
I think we can set this up this year to see how this categorical funding works its way out, and then find a permanent home for these dollars as we work through these, these other things here that don't really have a fixed piece. So you can either do that, or we can go back and by law, have to reappropriate every time they run out of this and run out of that. I'm just trying to make it smoother, and I couldn't care less, as long as we got the money there, so the programs are not cut, and that they're able to own up to their end of the deal, making sure that we meet quarterly and discuss these financial categories and work through this in a different fashion.
And I think that's the key, Mayor, is to keep, keep a pulse on the, on the finances and, you know, versus the needs, and see how we're tracking. It's not, it's not like we're going to be delivering the 6 million dollars...
The first day of July.
What you don't want is them having to decide now to cut something, because they've got to decide upfront.
Absolutely.
And so we need to make sure upfront, they know that the funding is available to be able to keep all of these programs in place, and as they work through these other issues here with the insurance and all of that. And they...
But Mayor, one of the key things, and we need to make sure, we ensure that funding is there where our children can receive a quality education. That's paramount. Costs should not be the determining thing. These children represent our future, and if we don't invest in them there, we can say Portsmouth goodbye. We've been there through the days, when we had to borrow paper for children to write, salvage books, used books for them to read. We aren't going back to that time. So we want to make sure the children have what they need and the teachers are properly paid to feel important to do their jobs.
Mr. Cherry?
Yeah, thank you. You know, I think, I think we're all saying about the same thing here.
There you go.
And the ordinance, if you, since, as Mr. Meeks says, some of those things may want to be more or less. So if you write the ordinance, list, list the programs, and if it turns out to be more or less, you're not tied to a number stuck to the program. You give them the 6.4 million dollars, they found out how much it is, they spend it accordingly. That way, if we put these numbers in here, that you have exact numbers, and it turns out to be another half million dollars for something, or half million dollars less for something else, definitely have to come back. But if we just give them, give them the 6.4 in the ordinance and list the programs, they spend it on the programs. That's the easiest way to do it.
There you go. The money for teachers they never hired.
We may not, but this is only, this is only...
Well, one thing, unlike last year, they're willing to open the books and be transparent.
So let's not beat this with, if we got agreement, enough agreements to do it, let's agree that we're going to...
So we're going to set the ordinance, we're going to do a separate ordinance, and we're going to take 6.4 million dollars out of the fund balance to fund this for this year to, and spend this year working in a cooperative manner with the school board and with their finance committees to make sure that we, we get this thing in its proper place.
We find our true budget.
Right, and we find us a true budget, and again, they have committed to me that they're willing to do this, and I think they've done it, most of us here on this council, and so...
When?
Yes, Mayor.
When are you trying to do this?
We're going to do this tonight when we approve the budget.
You're going to have me in ordinance?
I'll have in ordinance in five minutes.
Sure.
And added to, added to the agenda.
Hold on, go ahead. You go ahead, Bill.
My question is, and maybe this is to the attorney, does this have to be a public hearing on the separate ordinance?
Oh, no, sir.
Does not? Let me tell you why. You're not amending this year's budget. If you were amending this year's budget, then you would be in a different category. But what I think, so that George can give you an ordinance that you can look at before you go into a regular session, is that you're looking at appropriating 6.4 million dollars by a separate ordinance to 2014, '15, to the category of instructions.
It's in the education fund, in the class, in the, in the instruction classification.
Yeah. Is that the consensus?
I don't know if all that goes into that fund and that. That's what, that's the only thing I'm that clear on. Does that fund also cover the IT category?
Well, Mayor, what will happen is, the money will be appropriated. If they find later on, we've, I think that the manager's staff has anticipated that there will be adjustments, since you're appropriating by categories and there's going to be, or by classifications, and there's going to be some give and take during the year, some adjustments, because you really, these are all guessed, best estimates of what each classification is going to require, but it may be that one requires more and one requires less, so they move the funds. So it's just a matter of moving the money.
As long as we get that understanding, then that's fine.
And we're meeting quarterly, so we'll...
That's what budgets are.
That's the key, quarterly meetings.
Quarterly meetings. One at a time. Yes, sir.
Well, not just meetings, you're appropriating the funds quarterly.
Right.
Okay. Now, this has never been done before, so no one in the city administration, nor no one in the school administration that I'm aware of, would have the right answer as to how much money is needed in the first quarter.
Makes sense.
So what represents, what you have tonight is the best guess. That ordinance, what it does, it approves the total budget, but appropriates the funds for the schools for the first quarter. So you'll have three times during the course, three more times during the course of the year to come back and fine tune that in any way, because for the second quarter, the first quarter's July, August, September. Sometime in September, you'll have to adopt a ordinance that will appropriate the funds for the second quarter. Sometime in December, you'll have to adopt a ordinance to appropriate funds for the third quarter. So each time, you have a chance to, to fine tuning.
Okay. Bill?
Thank you, Mayor. Base, base, obviously, this is need space, so with the ordinance, say, up to 6.4 million dollars?
What the ordinance does, it approves the overall budget and then appropriates the funds for the first quarter.
Okay.
Okay. What the funds, what happens, what, what the ordinance does say, that consistent with the appropriate code section, monies that are unspent, the appropriation lapses, and they come back to the city.
Yeah, they come back anyway.
But that's, that's law.
That is the law.
Okay.
So it's just restating the law in the ordinance.
Okay.
This is fund balance that we have today that we're going to spend in this fiscal year before July 1?
No. No, 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 no. It's expected July 1.
Yeah.
Remember, you have a policy, and assume that the policy fills up this cup. And so that policy requires you to have thirty-five point one million dollars in this cup, okay? I think your question would be, when you take away all these appropriations, how much do you have on top of the cup? Would you like to know that?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Two point four to two point five million.
Above the policy.
Above the policy.
Yeah, okay.
And I'll give you some comparison, because if I was sitting in yours-
That's after the six.
That's after the six. To give you a comparison, in 2010, you were two hundred and twenty thousand dollars below the policy. It jumped up to ten point nine in 2011, eight point six in, excuse me, ten point nine in 10. 2011 was eight point six, 2012 was eighteen point seven, and 2013 was thirty-three point five. That's why the bond rating folks were saying, good job. We want you to continue to not only maintain the policy but add to it. So when you do all the appropriations, to include the appropriations that are in your budget for consideration, you'll, you'll end up with a margin of two point five.
Okay.
Okay? Everybody?
We're still in the good.
Yeah, that's right.
All right, any other discussion on that? All right. George, can we get an ordinance done so we can take care of that in the regular meeting? Any other issues on the budgets or items on the budgets that we need to discuss? Okay. All right, we're done with the budget piece. Yep.
You have a motion before you to go on to the-
Go on to close session.
One, one, I do have one.
Okay. Mr. Cherry?
You, you're waiting on the constitutional officers. Does, does that, that doesn't include the register's office, does it?
No, the reg, the register is not a constitutional law.
Okay, right. So they're getting theirs right along with the rest of the employees.
We still get state funding.
They still get state funding, but they're unlike constitutional officers.
So they're not part of that group?
No.
That's our one, no?
No. And what I, what I want to make sure, because we do have constitutional officers representatives, we don't know what the state budget is gonna do with any type of cost of living increase. So this does not reflect, our budget tonight does not reflect the, a three percent for the whole year for constitutional officers. It's based on the concept, let's, let's see what the state does, and after the, the dust settles, we'll figure it out then.
Okay, yeah. What we're gonna do, we're just gonna wait, we're just gonna need to wait, see which of the three budgets the state approves, and then we'll adjust, then we'll adjust. And we, and we're planning to do that.
Yes. And depending, you know, how much money the, the state puts on the table, if you want to do more than that, then you, then you're in the same situation.
Same situation, right.
How do you do it?
Got you.
Where do you get the money from?
Okay.
How about the license, licensing fee? Where do we stand on that?
Okay. The way your ordinances are done, are set up tonight, you go through the revenue generating ordinances first. You go through the ordinance that sets the tax rates for both real estate and personal property. You go through the cigarette tax, and then on there, because there was a majority of council that said, we want to do this, is the auto license tax. Once all those ordinances that relate to revenue generation, then you come to your budget ordinance, because if you don't adopt any, all of those, then, you know, you got a hole in your budget to adopt your budget if the income's not there.
Yeah.
So as George said to you by email, but also has said orally, because this is a fee, it's not, there's no public hearing that's required, but you stated upfront, I mean, the very first discussion that you had on the budget, that this is what you wanted to do. So, and you had the majority of council saying, this is how we want to fund it. So it's not like it's been hit on a bushel basket. And I know that you, there are some people who are taking swings at you for that, but George would tell you, and he's, he's your lawyer.
I will tell you that he's correctly stated that it's a fee, it's not a tax, so there's no notice or public hearing requirement, but in fact, it, it was discussed in a council meeting of probably thirty, at least thirty days ago, when, when the matter of, of, when the budget was first presented, because it was, it was put out as a possible source of funding for, for the employee raises.
Mr. Moody?
On that, since we, we know what that's being used for, and I certainly support that wholeheartedly, with that said, it's being used for reoccurring expense, which under normal circumstances, I guess circumstances aren't too normal right now, that it would be part of the budget. I would, and I threw that out, I don't know how many people saw that, that I would like to have some type of sunset on that, so next year, it is part of the operating budget, not, not a fee increase. Fee, fee increases go on in perpetuity. I've never seen one be rolled back yet.
Okay.
And-
Keep it increasing.
Is that an accurate statement?
Visualize this now as the big bucket, okay? All of our, all of our revenue comes into a big bucket, and it's not taxed for any particular thing. Because the, the real estate tax rate is our largest source, is the easiest one, is the most sensitive one, is the one that we always equate, so many pennies on the tax rate. You want to have a citywide leash law, that you can't take your puppy out without a lease, and you want to know what the cost is, it would be so many pennies on the tax rate. But all this money will go, whether it's a fee or a tax or some other source of revenue, it goes in there and it loses then its identity when we use it to fund the general fund. So it is very much part of the ongoing budget. Now, you can, you can say, okay, we don't, we want to shift this, though, we want to shift it to the real estate tax rate or the personal property tax, you could do that.
Well, I, I think, I think it should be part of the overall tax, real estate tax, and I'm not talking about an increase, I'm talking about coming from that pool of money.
Well, you know, well, Bill, that'd be possible. Say, for example, if, if the real estate values went up, you, you might be able to absorb it that, that way. But, but otherwise, if, if you decrease, decrease the money from the tax, from the license, you gotta get it from somewhere else. So you're either gonna have to, you're either gonna have to raise something else or raise taxes or something, but only, only unless some other revenue sources increases are gonna be the bounce to that.
Yeah, I understand. What, what I'm saying is revisit that particular increase next year.
You're saying next year, look at, see if maybe that has happened, if maybe, maybe we've got more revenue from real estate or personal property.
Hopefully, the revenue stream is increased with new development coming online.
Mayor, you can revisit any revenue stream, any, any source of funding like taxes or fees every year.
Every year.
And that's what's happened in, in some years, when, particularly in the boom years, when, when real estate values went up, in the early boom years, council actually reduced the tax rate.
Yeah. Hopefully, we'll be in that position.
That would be nice.
Just one quick thing, and I'm sure that you understand this.
Is that a cup?
No, sir. This, this is now the bucket.
How would you explain these things if you didn't have these cups?
How would be lost?
And glasses, all these artifacts around you.
He knows, he knows real visual.
I know. I like, I like it, I like it.
We have become such a visual society. When the real estate bust happened in 2008, your total assessed value went down, and so the money from the revenue from, from real estate tax went down, okay? Let's say that this cup represents all the money that you got in, in 2008. With a rate going down, in order to get the same amount of revenue, you either had to, what's called equalize the rate, which is to adjust the rate up to generate the same amount of taxes, or hope for new construction and new development. We, council, your predecessors, never equalized the rate, and so that's why it's really difficult. We've never fully covered from 2008. We're at a dollar twenty-seven, an equalized rate, and we've showed you that before, would be much higher than a dollar twenty-seven.
One thirty-three or something like that.
Yet our fund balance is still higher than the styrofoam cup, so we-
A bust?
As long as we stay, as long as we stay on top of that styrofoam cup, we're pretty good shape.
We're on crash and run.
But you've enjoyed not too far back, not two point five, but thirty-three million and eighteen point nine million.
Right.
Okay. All right, we got a motion going to close. Somebody want to take us in?
I'm ready to go into closed meeting pursuant to provisions of Virginia Tate Section 2.2-2711 for filing purposes, discussion concerning acquisition of real property for public purpose in the section C, as permitted under subsection 8.3, and discussion concerning prospective candidates for appointing city boards and commissions as permitted under subsection 8.1.
Second.
Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Meeks?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Ms. Randall?
Yes.
Mayor Wright?